The dedication is going to be by Pastor Hudson. And Commissioner Gruber is going to do the pledge of allegiance. So where's the pastor?
Go ahead, Pastor. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Lord, I give you thanks for our county commission and humbly ask that you would give us your guidance and wisdom in all deliberations. Lord, we ask for your help that we all might walk with integrity today. And Lord, in the decisions that are made will be done with good, that would be good for the whole, all of our citizens of Baldwin County. And we thank you for your help and for answering our prayers. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want everybody to know that Commissioner Underwood had to go to Montgomery. She's not going to be here for the regular meeting. She has to go up there and try to fight for some bills that we're, the county commission is against right now. So I'm hoping that she succeeds. So, but I just want to let you know where she's at. First off, today's April 1st. Like I said in the work session, I was going to do an April Fools thing, but I think we've had enough of that today. So I just want to leave that alone. Commissioners, we got adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the March 18th, 2025 regular meeting.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
All right, got a second. All in favor, signify if I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, commissioners, we got the, Commissioner Ball, we got payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Got a motion?
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Chairman, make a motion, we approve item BA2.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, on the consent items, CA4 has been removed. FE1 has been added with modifications from purchasing director. I want y'all to be aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
There's only two of us, so we're trying to figure out which one we're going to do. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, got a motion to approve?
A second.
And you got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Consent is done. We go to presentations. First one is DA1, presentation of lifesaver awards. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, appreciate you allowing us to be here. We've actually got a few presentations we're going to do this morning, but I will start with the lifesaver awards. We've actually had a few of these throughout the year. We honored a few of the others at our annual awards back in February. But if I could get Deputy Stabler to come forward, Deputy Jacob Bridges, Deputy Brandon Chain, and Deputy Delaney Thomas, if you would come forward. Sergeant Stabler. Just right here. You're not known yet. I have Sergeant Stabler up here because he made this nomination. Some of you may remember this call, but essentially I will read this to you. "I, Sergeant Joseph Stabler, would like to formally nominate Deputies Jacob Bridges, Brandon Chain, and Delaney Thomas to be recipients of the honorable lifesaving award stemming from a boating accident near Grabing Island on May 15th, 2024. These three deputies should be honored and commended for their actions from that incident. On May 15th, 2024, the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office received a call for service regarding a female who had been injured from a boat propeller near Grabing Island. Furthermore, the injured party received major injury to include full amputation of her left leg just below her knee and partial amputation of her right leg just below her calf muscle. Deputy Shane Bridges and Thomas, without hesitation or reservations, boarded Aleah and fire personnel watercraft and immediately began their trek through the water to render aid. As the emergency watercraft approached the shoreline, all deputies exited the boat and treaded through water until they were able to reach the victim. They immediately began assessing the victim. The bleeding was somewhat controlled, leading deputies to be allowed to apply three tourniquets to the victim and ultimately stopping the bleeding. They continued rendering aid by addressing the wounds and keeping the victim calm while fire personnel prepared a landing zone on the island for their, for her evacuation. Even though this victim suffered limb losses, without a doubt due to the deputy's chain, bridges, and Thomas's quick reliance on training and their decisive action, they were able to control the bleeding and save this victim of this unfortunate accident. I could not be more proud to honor and work alongside these deputies. They are deserving to receive this lifesaving award and recognized for their heroic actions taken on May 15th, 2024. And as my honor as Sheriff of Baldwin County, we are going to award you with the lifesaving award." "For immediate decisive action taken May 15th, 2024, when performed, lifesaving measures on a citizen who was injured in a boating accident near Grabing Island on the Tensaw River. Even though the victim suffered limb loss, it was without a doubt these deputies' quick reliance on training and decisive action was able to control the bleeding and help this victim survive this unfortunate accident. Signed, April 1st, Sheriff of Baldwin County." Commissioners, I'm very proud of these deputies. Obviously, like I said, there are many other deputies that have performed these actions throughout the year and corrections officer as well, but I appreciate you guys recognizing them.
Absolutely. That's right. I just want to give you another round of applause. Since it's just three of us, Sergeant, why don't you get in there with your booth?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have the pleasure here. I want to introduce a couple of new deputies for the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office. They both recently graduated from the Alabama Peace Officers and Standing Standards Commission and received their minimum standards to be police officers and deputy sheriffs. A little bit about them, the sheriff's office prides itself in the number of veterans that we hire. It's a priority for us. I know we are somewhere near the 100 number in the amount of veterans we hire, but these two are no exception. Nicole Thomas is a reserve in the United States Army, private second class, and she actually graduated the Jefferson County Apost Academy back in December. And we're exceptionally proud to have her, and she's actually bilingual in Spanish.
Awesome.
Deputy Cohen is a reserve member. He is a private pilot licensed and EMT licensed in the state of Florida. He has associates and bachelor's degree in emergency management, disaster management from American Military and Community College of the Air Force. He's a member of the U.S. Air Force 482nd Explosive Ordnance Disposal Flight from 2011 till present. And he was an emergency manager coordinator at the Seminole Tribe of Florida. He's certified as a U.S. Air Force Expert Marksman and senior leadership, airman leadership, and he's proficient in EOD, bomb squad, FBI forensic post blast. He also speaks Spanish. He graduated from the Montgomery Academy in February this year, and he worked in JPS prior to his academy. They are both now signed to the patrol division and doing quite well, but I just wanted to honor them today before you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Are we ready for the third presentation?
Hang on, Chair. Y'all want to say anything, commissioners, about the new hires, the new deputies or the lifesavings?
Welcome aboard, you know. I had a grandson that last year, he graduated from the police academy in, where was it? Huntsville. And he's with the Orange Beach Police Department. So, you know, I know what y'all went through. It's tough, you know. He had a lot of things to say about it, but you know, it's just great to have young people stepping up and doing the law enforcement because it's a job nobody really wants to do. But you know, we're glad that y'all are stepping forward and doing that, and thank you so very much.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, I was just going, I was going to save all that to the end of the presentations.
Well, we've got a bunch of them. That's the reason I wanted to go.
Yes, I mean, I definitely, congratulations to the three lifesaver awards for sure. And then the new hires, it's always good to see new faces coming on board to a great organization, and we're proud to be a small part of that. So thank y'all for your dedication and service.
Deputy Chain, Deputy Thomas, and Deputy Bridges, thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you did out there. It's tough to be a deputy being law enforcement nowadays is tough. So thank you. And for the new hires that came on, I remember doing it back in 1995 when I first came on and got Apost certified. It was tough back then, but I know what it's like now. It's totally different. But the society has changed and it's against law enforcement. So I really applaud y'all wanting to be in law enforcement. So thank you for being, being here and coming aboard. So thank you. Go ahead, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention today that the sheriff's office has a large amount of sorrow in our heart. We lost Captain Darren Williamson. We'll have his funeral tomorrow. Actually, Darren was a very valued member of this family, of this agency. He was one of those guys that was all in with the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office. He retired just a couple of years ago, and he lost his fight with cancer, but we'll be with him tomorrow, but certainly want to think about him today while we're here. On the opposite side of that, let me say this, today, April 1st, marks the 50th anniversary for Major Steve Arthur and his service in law enforcement. He actually started as a Mobile Police Cadet on April 1st in 1975. I don't think I was even born in 1975, but I'm proud of him. We're going to spend some time with him this afternoon. But with that, I'd like to transition into a program that the sheriff's office was able to start in the fall of last year and get it off the ground. And for that, I'm actually going to, I'm not going to misrepresent this in any way. There's some deputies that have put in a lot of hard work and a lot of time to get this program up and going. So if I could get Deputy Pickett, Deputy D, if you will. They're going to come forward, Mr. Chairman, if you will, and they're going to make a presentation of the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office Cadet Program.
Future deputies right there.
Like the sheriff said, I'm Landon Pickett. I'm one of the few people who helped start the cadet program. Who is my clicker? Yeah, okay. So our program is post number 0105 in honor of Bill Smith, who passed away in 2021 on Fort Morgan Road. So we just figured it was right to give our post number that, that number. So what does a cadet program mean to us? 2011, June 11th, 2011 was my first meeting as a Shelby County Sheriff's Office Explorer. And I was hooked. We did, I remember doing traffic stops, and I was hooked. I knew I wanted to be a cop at that moment. And throughout the years, I met a lot of different people, Corporal D being one of them, who ended up recruiting me to come here when he came here. So the program, I could talk to you all day about what it, what it means to us, but we're teaching law enforcement, leadership, character development, preparing them for law enforcement, or whatever career they, they choose to do. Corporal, do you have anything?
Yeah, so, so the program is, is designed to prepare youth, specifically people in high school age, for a career in law enforcement. I will tell you that as a product of this program, it definitely helped me in my career, you know, from multi, you know, two different states and getting, getting where I ultimately ended here at the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office. But what I've found throughout the, the years being involved in this program is a lot of, a lot of these kids don't go into law enforcement, but what they do take with them is discipline and friendships that will, will go on forever. Deputy Pickett here and I have known each other for a long time because of this program. So that's what these young people here are doing, doing right now. So it's a great program.
So we get a lot of questions, what exactly is the cadet program? This is different than like Mobile's cadet program where they're paid. Ours is kind of the explore program. It's just sponsored and insured by a, another entity. Okay. So this is some general information about our program. We're insured and affiliated with the Public Safety Cadet Program. Their motto is preparing to serve and protect. We're insured and affiliated with Aleah, which is the Alabama Law Enforcement Explorer Advisors Association. Ages 14 to 20 can join. And you can, you don't have to go to a public school or whatever, you can, any kids 14 to 20 that are interested in law enforcement. We're aimed at molding future law enforcement officers and leaders in other careers. Like Corporal D said, there only may be two or three that go into law enforcement out of this group, but they can take the traits that we're teaching them and apply that to whatever career they, they choose to do. We meet every Tuesday. Hold on, can you go back? It might be on a timer. I don't know. We meet every Tuesday from four to seven at the Regions Bank Building in Robertsdale. Basically, what we do is exposure to everyday law enforcement functions, traffic stops, burglary response, warrant service, domestic violence response, first aid, active shooter response, and hostage negotiation. We participate in community service programs, cook-offs, bike charity rides, whatever we can get the kids out in the community doing, that's what we're out there doing. We compete in a state hosted competition, and we're going to participate in a week-long academy that'll be held in Baymanet this year. So the state competition is a two-day event held in Calera in Shelby County. It's a great way for the kids to be able to network and meet kids of the same age, interested in the same things. This year, seven different agencies competed. We had 55 kids and seven agencies, and they competed in those eight categories. Unknown risk stop, domestic violence, unknown problem DUI stop, crime scene investigation, response to disturbance, burglary in progress, and response to active threat, which is response to active shooter. We placed in nine of those. Can you go back for just a second? I don't remember what the, thank you. We placed first in two different categories, unknown risk stop and unknown problem. Second place in response to active threat and crime scene investigation, and two third place trophies in response to disturbance and burglary in progress. So not bad for, I guess we were established for six months at that time. The academy is a week-long police academy boot camp style training. It'll be held at Coastal College this year. Days start at 4:45 in the morning with PT. We go into classrooms, scenario training, firearms, team building, formation, and marching. Most of that is character development. We provide a family dinner for the, there'll be agencies from all over the state and one out of Georgia coming. So the families that come in the night before will provide a dinner for them and their families. The graduation will be held, and a video from different pictures and things like that are played throughout the, from the week. We're estimating about 50 kids this year and 20 staff members to attend, and we'll be utilizing the sheriff's office range for the firearms portion and the cook team to provide the meals. Kind of our overall mission or goals is to produce leaders in whatever career path they choose to do. We're promoting the sheriff's office culture and the mentality of being above the standard so that that can translate to their everyday life. We're preparing those who are interested in law enforcement for early starts and dispatcher corrections. We currently have three kids who are eligible to start their careers as early as the summer, and they all either want, two want to do corrections and one maybe want to do dispatch. And we're going to continue to recruit and develop the program and to grow the Aleah Association. Captain, can you click it one more time? This is a video that we made.
The reason I have a Cadet Program is I'm going to law enforcement, I want to be older, and this is the best start I could make.
My favorite part of the Cadet Program is being able to go through scenarios that we let deputies experience every day.
I'm empty, God, I hate it.
So that's just some pictures and videos that we've taken since we started in August. We started right after the school year started, and our goal is to get back in the schools before the school year ends to see if we can try, try to get young adults to be interested and keep them interested all throughout high school and hopefully kind of recruit for the Sheriff's Office. So, thank you.
Yeah.
I really would like to point out a couple things. All the bad guys you saw in those videos are standing in brown back here right now.
We got some more volunteers if you need for later.
Okay, we'll take volunteers. But anyway, I really want to say thank you to the deputies that have invested theirselves so much in this program, getting it off the ground. And one thing Deputy Pickett said, that they were only in this a few months and they had already completed enough training to win those awards. So I'm immensely proud of that. I'm proud of the fact that so many people in the Sheriff's Office want this to do well, which tells me that it will. And we are gonna use, it's a new recruiting tool. We don't have a county high school that, that we actually have school resource officers in, so we don't have access to that like a municipality would. So I'm very proud of this program. It's the only one in the county right now, and we look to grow that. But again, I just have to say it's a huge success for Baldwin County.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. The thing that I want to ask the cadets is what was your favorite part of that training? Did you like the takedowns or did you like the traffic stop? What did you like most? Not traffic stop? Did you like the, the boot camp style?
They haven't experienced that yet.
They haven't experienced that?
That's the second video.
Oh, okay. Well, good. I saw the film and I was thinking, oh my God, it brings back memories. So it's tough, but you can do it. You can do it. I'm very proud of that too, Sheriff. I'm glad that y'all are doing that, you know, and it's good to see who wants to be in law enforcement and who doesn't want. Because once they get in and get hired, sometimes they get in there and they say, oh my God, this is not for me. And then you've spent all that money and investment, you know, on them. So that's great. Thank you, Sheriff. Do we want to stand back here and get a picture? Since there's a lot of them.
I don't know if I need a step stool.
Thank y'all for doing this.
Oh, my God, this is a...
Any of y'all want to read this one?
I've got one. How many you got?
I got two, it's on.
Skipper, read it.
I got it. You want to do it?
I've got it. Commissioner, I've actually got the...
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, I've got it.
You go read it and I'll just do the...
Yeah, you can just present it.
All right.
You're welcome. Yes. Okay, next, of course, we have a proclamation, and bear with me, it's been a while since I've done these. Proclaiming April 13th through 19th, 2025, as the National Telecommunicators Communication Officers Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas the second week in April is dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunications specialists, providing valuable services to law enforcement personnel throughout the county and Bal, throughout the county and in Baldwin County, Alabama, throughout the country, excuse me, throughout the country and in Baldwin County, Alabama. And whereas telecommunicators were first recognized nationwide by the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in 1991, and whereas in the early 1990s, the National Association of Public Safety Communication Officers received, received from the US, the United States Congress, a proclamation through Resolution 284 to create National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas over 500,000 telecommunications specialists provide professional services to first, the first responders throughout the United States. And whereas the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office receives valuable and critical services provided by the 22 communication officers. And whereas the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office provides interoperability communication to all law enforcement in Baldwin County by its Baldwin County Emergency Radio Network Community Channel. And whereas the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office Communications Division receives approximately 100,000 calls for service each year. And whereas Baldwin County 911 receives an additional 100,000 or more 911 calls for service for fire, medical, and law enforcement-related emergencies. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Baldwin County Commission and the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office that the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025 is hereby designated as telecommu, as telecommunication, telecommunicators, communication officers week in Baldwin County, Alabama.
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to, I want to thank the Commission, both on behalf of the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office and on behalf of my other family at 911. I'm the vice chairman of the 911 Board, and we work with some really great people there. Baldwin County 911 is in a position it hasn't been in in some time. Really proud of what's going on there. Obviously, Telecommunicators Week is very important in law enforcement. It's sometimes said that, you know, the backbone of any law enforcement agency is the patrol division. You know, I, I think that that needs to be reset because these, these men and women that receive these emergency calls and relay those, they're, they're saving lives every day. They're keeping deputies, police officers safe, and this, this week that acknowledges everything that they do in this profession is well-deserved, and we look forward to celebrating that here in Baldwin County.
Christie, you have anything?
Christie doesn't have anything, so Commissioners, thank you for recognizing Telecommunicators Week in 2025.
I wish it was a month instead of a week, to be honest. I think y'all deserve a month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Are we gonna get...
You gonna call out the next one, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, the next one is Resolution 2025-089, recognizing the Stockton Five Arts Club, 100th year anniversary.
He's here from the Fine Arts Club. Y'all can all come up here. Y'all can hold that. Mr. Chairman, I will be reading the resolution for the Stockton Fine, Fine Arts Club. Where is the Stockton? That's Five Arts, right? Five, excuse me. Stockton Five Arts Club was founded in October 16th, 1925 by Mr. Isaac Pierce, IP Mason, in Stockton, Alabama, who encouraged women to challenge their minds and reach beyond the confines of their home, child rearing. And whereas the purpose of Stockton Five Arts Club was to study the fine arts encompassing literature, architecture, music, painting, and sculpture collectively represented by the acronym LANS. And whereas the mission of the Stockton Five Arts Club was to integrate the principles of LANS into the community. The club motto became "The Good, The Beautiful, The True." And in 1927, two years after its inception, the Stockton Five Arts Club was federated by the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which the club remained a part of for the next 72 years. And whereas, whereas following the withdrawal of Stockton Five Arts Club from the Federation in 1999, there was a greater emphasis on addressing local needs. The club continued to promote appreciation of the arts and service in local community. And whereas the Stockton Five Arts Club has supported the schools in North Baldwin by monetary donations and annual scholarships to North Baldwin High School graduate, the club has been active in community through historical preservation efforts such as the creation of the Stockton Town Hall and the 19th Century Building, and the creation of the Stockton Crate Murder Trail, and the reading programs in elementary schools and head start schools. The club has donated art to local schools and participates in art shows, festivals, and many other events held in the community. And whereas the women of the Stockton Five Arts Club are leaders not only in the North Baldwin community, but in the county and the state, and through their volunteer efforts, continue to support the North Baldwin community in various ways promoting the club's mission to encourage the love and study of the five arts. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Baldwin County Commission in regular symbol, session assembled, that the Baldwin County Commission hereby adopts Resolution 2025-089, commending the Stockton Five Arts Club for its continued efforts to promote the five arts in North Baldwin community. And congratulations to Stockton Five Arts Club as it celebrates its 100th anniversary on October 16th, 2025, throughout its centennial year in 2025.
100 years.
Anybody else want to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I'm Georgine Connor. I am the co-chair of our 100th anniversary celebration. I'm the club historian. It is amazing, 100 years. Who would have thought in sleepy little quiet Stockton that we probably have the oldest art organization in the entire county and probably in Alabama? We have met consistently over 100 years, and there's so many women who have made an impact in Stockton, in North Baldwin, and Baldwin County. We thank you for recognizing us and thank you, and come to Stockton, enjoy the arts.
Yes.
Anybody else? Y'all gonna get a picture? So y'all gotta...
The 911 National Telecommunications, Communicators. Every second of a shift, dispatchers or police, communication officers standing at the ready, and y'all know that, especially the ones that are sitting here, law enforcement. Just on call away, just one call away from making a, a difference between chaos and calm. And it's just amazing that what y'all go through, the dispatchers. And I, my hands are off, my hat's off to y'all. My heart's with you because I know what y'all go through, and just like all the deputies know. You know, answering the call, you're the voice in the darkness. I wrote this down. The calm in the storm, the life, lifeline to safety, keeping hearts warm through the fear and the fire. You answer the call, standing so fearless. You give it your all. You're like angels. I saw that in somewhere where I read, and it just means a lot because I remember, and I said this before, when I was a young Alabama state trooper in Washington County, it was a domestic call. And the rural counties, when you're, when you're a state trooper, you're everything. You're the deputy, you're the police officer, you're the game warden, you're everything because you're by yourself. And I remember getting a call from Washington County Dispatch that there's a domestic going on in McIntosh. And if you know a little bit of Washington County, you know McIntosh is a, is a known for its, for assaults and different things. I remember the dispatcher screaming over the radio. I was monitoring Washington County's frequency, and it was just something, it was, the feeling that I got, the eerie feeling that this dispatcher couldn't do anything, and it just broke my heart. And I was the first officer on scene, and I couldn't wait for the backup. Backup was 30 minutes away. And that was my first domestic call. And troopers don't, and y'all know this, troopers don't go respond to, to domestics unless it's a rolling domestic. And that was something that I will always remember in respect for dispatchers. You're in, you, you're in my heart for a long, for my whole life, and you don't get recognized enough. You always got your favorite dispatcher. I had one that was Miss Bobby Meeks, and she, she was cool and calm and collective over the radio. You could be 10-100 or whatever, or assaults or anything going on, and she was very calm and I always loved it when she worked because I, I wanted to make sure I was working with her. But I just want to say that and thank y'all for what you do, the dispatchers, and, and I don't know if y'all called that anymore, it's been a while, but PCOS or something like that. But anyway, I just want to say thank y'all for what you do. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Item DA2. Is that what we gotta do, Anun?
No, second motion.
I got a motion, a second, need further discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was DA2.
We're on DA4 now.
Yeah. Do we need to do DA3 too, correct?
Are we voting on all of these?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we adopt Item DA3, the resolution for the Five Arts Club.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, need further discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one's, I'm, I've got two pages, so bear with me. This is proclaiming the, the month of April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and Sexual Assault Prevention and Awareness Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Do we have people here, the lighthouse, and I think the show, or the bank, and some other... I'm gonna let y'all hold these. Preventing child abuse and neglect in the community is a community problem, but depends on involvement from people throughout the community. And children deserve the best we have within us, and they look to us to be their protagonists, role models and heroes. And children who are loved and nurtured grow up to love and nurture others. Children who survive abuse and neglect may carry the burden of their maltreatment into adulthood. And children who have been victims of abuse and neglect are more likely to suffer from substance abuse, depression, learning disabilities, academic failure, emotional and behavior disorders, and the ability to foster healthy relationships. And child maltreatment knows no social or economic boundaries and occurs in every neighborhood in America. And National Child Abuse Prevention Month is, is a month-long observance during which communities and organizations raise awareness about the critical issues of child abuse and neglect, and educate the public on prevention. And according to the Rape, Abuse, and Incest National Network, every 68 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes, that victim is a child. And only 25 out of every 1,000 predators will end up in prison. And only 310 out of every 1,000 sexual assaults are reported to police, meaning more than two out of three go unreported. And the most important thing we can do for our victims is believe them and support them. And National Sex, and National Sexual Assault Awareness Month seeks to raise awareness, find solutions, and foster community involvement, as well as to remember survivors of sexual assault and other tribute to all victims of sexual assault throughout America each year. And the effects of child abuse and neglect and sexual assault are felt by the entire community, requiring all to join together to take action to create a safer environment for everyone. And the Baldwin County Commission commends the Baldwin County Care House, the Lighthouse, the Exchange Club Family Center for encouraging all citizens to become more aware of child abuse and neglect and sexual assault within the Baldwin County, and for remaining strong and persistent advocates towards the support of all victims of such terrible acts. Now therefore, be it...
outside of our community to get the care that they deserve. So thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany, you'd like to say anything?
I'll do it.
Commissioners? I know we're gonna get pictures, so we're gonna get pictures.
I got her back here. Put it in there.
I got five seconds. All right. All right. Commissioners, I have a...
I got a motion to adopt DA 4.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Need further discussion on this. Hearing none? All in favor by signify by saying aye? Aye. All right. The only reason I kind of spoke during each one is because there were a lot of them and look what, and see people leave, and then, but that's okay. All right. Next is public hearing. I don't think we have anything. Nothing on there, so public comments? Anybody that didn't sign up that wants to speak? Sir, you want to speak? You the only one in here? All right, thank you. Press questions? There's nobody here. Commissioner comments? Who wants to start?
I'll go ahead. Again, thank the staff for all they do to get our meetings in order so that we can conduct business for the county. And all the presentations that we had today, I think each and every one of those participants is very important, you know, the job that they perform, you know, from the sexual abuse part, you know, with the children's and all that stuff, you know, that's something you hate to hear about, but it does happen in this county, and we do have victims of it. And, you know, I thank, I thank those people for helping those poor children get through that. And also, the deputies for life-saving was miraculous that they saved that person's life. And, you know, so many other things that's going on within this county, you know, I'm very proud of each and every one of our employees for what they do to make this county better for our citizens, and thank you so very much for that.
Echo what Commissioner Gruber says in relation to the staff putting together these meetings, employees. I mean, we had a, a pretty big rain event the other day that, that kept our highway department hopping all night long and other, other staff. And I'm glad that we're seeing some of the roads clear up and some of the blockages gone now, but there are some, definitely you don't really realize how many low-line areas you have until we have a rain event like we had the other day in just a matter of time. I don't, Mark, how many inches was that?
There was parts of the county got six inches of rain in one day.
So it was, it was, it was quite an experience. So I appreciate everybody that stepped up and, and just like Commissioner Gruber said, to the people who received lifesaver awards a day, you know, sometimes our sheriff deputies go unrecognized as being a first responder in that aspect, and, and just what a, what a way to just show the public that, you know, they all, they do more than just sit around and write tickets. So they're saving lives. And then all the presentations that, that happened today are, is always be a fun, fun to be a part of that process and, and be able to get pictures and that kind of stuff. It just shows how, how this, how the county supports one another with all of these activities, as well as the Commission's support. And I would, last but not least, Sheriff Lowry brought this up. I have known Darren Williamson just about since he joined the Sheriff's Office. We started around the same time. And I wrote him something not too long ago, sent him a message on Facebook saying I was praying for him and all that kind of stuff. And it's, it's real, it's gonna be a hole in the community's hearts not having him around. He was a, a big spirited guy, and like Sheriff said, he was embedded in the Sheriff's Office and believed in it 1,000% and would do anything for that department. And, and I really am praying for his family and praying for the peace. And tomorrow is, like Sheriff Lowry said, is the, is the funeral, and it's gonna be a somber day again in Baldwin County tomorrow, laying one of our retired deputies to rest. So I just wanted to extend my heartfelt sympathy and to the family and to our Sheriff's Office during this grieving process. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, I just echo from the other Commissioners. Thank you for the staff. Thank you for putting this together. And like Commissioner Ball said, there's a, there's a captain. When I first came on as a state trooper, he's got cancer. He's got hospice now, and he, he lives here in Baymanet. His name is George Smith. When I first came on as a trooper, he was an evergreen as a captain, and he was my first captain. So I just want to reach out to him, or if his family's listening, just keep a prayer for him and his family. Cancer is a terrible thing, and everybody knows that. So I just want to say thank y'all again. That's it. I have a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
All right, where to adjourn?